All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 10th, 2020 Hybrid School Board Regular Meeting for the Falls Church City School Board. Before I call the meeting to order, I just want to make sure everybody is ready to go in the room here and online, and I'm looking to make sure that's worked, and I think we are. So let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. So I would like to remind everybody that on April 6th, the City Council passed Emergency Ordinance TO 20-12, which was then extended by Ordinance TO 20-13 on May 26th. This ordinance allows for the school board to meet electronically in order to address continuity of operations associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. Our electronic meetings will still be open to the public, and there will be an opportunity for the public to make comment virtually or in person during the meeting and to submit written comments for the record. All of our meeting notices will be posted on the FCCPS website. Agendas will be available in advance on Board Docs, and meeting streams and recordings will be available via the FCCPS YouTube channel, youtube.com/fccpsorg. And before we actually go to take the role in all that, I just would like to let everybody know, those in the room, when you want to speak, we need to make sure, if you're not speaking, we need to make sure we're muted at all times. If you want to speak, let me recognize you, and then you come off mute and you speak, and we'll get the sound to work right. And basically, that'll be how we have to kind of do things tonight. So Ms. Giddo, will you call the role, please?
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yes, here.
Here.
Ms. Downs. Ms. Downs.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Litten.
Here.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
And Mr. Webb.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Will you all please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would seek a motion regarding tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt agenda as presented.
Mr. Chair, I may that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Vice Chair Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Ms. Giddo, will you call the vote?
Yes. Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger. Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have adopted the agenda as presented, and we'll move on to public comments and requests. We just, I want to make sure that folks understand the sort of the new process, so I'm going to read a bit more information than I normally would. Just remind everyone that while the state of emergency remains in effect due to COVID-19, written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to school board members. Please go ahead and send your written statements to School Board Clerk Marty Gadel at gadelm@fccps.org. Public comments received by 10:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting will be posted on Board Docs prior to the meeting. Individuals wishing to make public comment virtually or in person during the meeting, and anyone wishing to attend the meeting in person, must register in advance by emailing School Board Clerk Marty Gadel at gadelm@fccps.org. In your email, please state your name, address, contact information, whether you wish to make public comment virtually or in person, and whether you wish to attend the meeting in person. Registration will close at 5:00 p.m. Eastern Time on the business day before the meeting, and the first 10 individuals to indicate they wish to speak will receive an email with a speaker number and information to access the meeting. Individuals will speak in the order of their speaker number, and the board will receive comments for up to 30 minutes or until all registered speakers have been heard, whichever comes first. In accordance with School Board Policy BDDH, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. And the first 10 individuals who indicate they wish to attend the meeting in person may attend, subject to the following, attendees must arrive 10 minutes before the meeting. All attendees will have their temperature checked, and only pre-registered attendees whose temperature is below 100.4 Fahrenheit may attend the meeting. Attendees must wear face coverings at all time when inside the building and remain at least six feet away from other attendees. So with that, Ms. Giddo, do we have any registered speakers for tonight?
Yes, we do. We have one registered speaker, Mr. Rankin, and we also received eight written public comments that were posted on Board Docs.
Thank you. And Mr. Rankin.
Hey, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. My name is Andy Rankin. I live at 345 Little Falls Street, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my comments with the board live. It's almost like the old days, incredible. I'll keep this really brief. You probably all know that I lobbied hard a couple of months ago to get my daughter PJ back into school. She is one of a handful of special needs kids in the life skills program at MEH, and she returned to in-person instruction three days a week last month, and then this week that will increase to four days a week, and I can't tell you how happy this makes her. She loves going to school. I just want to thank the members of the school board who put up with my strong advocacy. Several of you were very generous with your time, hearing me out, and for that, I'm grateful. I also want to thank Rebecca Sharp and Peter Noonan, who both have jobs that are harder than ever right now. I thank you for having patience with me. I'm sure they are both very familiar with energized parents who are trying to look out for what's best for their kids. I know I was a little tenacious about getting PJ back in school, but hopefully you understand where I was coming from. And finally, a huge thanks, obviously, to the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the bus drivers, the bus aides, and the rest of the staff for making it possible for PJ to go back to school. I'll say, if anyone out there is ever looking for a pick-me-up, swing by my house a little before 7:30 in the morning and watch PJ waiting to get on the bus, it is just pure joy for her, and for that, I thank you, and that is all I have tonight. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. And Ms. Giddo, we had eight comments that were submitted, is that correct? And they are posted to Board Docs?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Rankin, for your comments, and with that, and the public comments that are posted online, we'll now move ahead to item three on our agenda, which is actually a closed session, and so I would be looking for a motion regarding a closed session. Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter: personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignations, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, staff termination, dependent care leave, long-term medical leave, childcare leave requests, and leave of absence, and advisory committee appointment, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident tuition student.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Litten. Ms. Giddo, will you call the role?
Yes. Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone. I sent another Zoom invitation for the closed session just now, so, Dr. Noonan, are we going to stay in this room and not for the closed?
Yes, we're going to stay right here, and then we're going to ask those that aren't in closed session to step out of the room temporarily. It'll probably be about a 10-minute closed session, and then we'll invite them back when it's time to return.
Okay, then, I would ask that everyone not in attendance physically and here also, please go over to the other Zoom call, and we'll pick it up in just a minute with the closed session, and then we'll call everyone back in. Thank you. And, all right, so first, I need to make sure that we have good to a sound with Mr. Webb, so, Mr. Webb, can you hear me? Okay.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine.
Okay, good.
All right, with that, then, I would seek a motion reconvening to open.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reconvene to open. I move that the board reconvene to open meeting.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Mr. Webb, I did hear you. Do you want to take the second on that one?
I will second that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Giddo.
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, then. We have reconvened to open, and at this point, I would seek a motion certifying our closed meeting. And Ms. Litten.
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Ms. Giddo.
Okay, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have certified our meeting, and we move on to recognitions and reports, and Dr. Noonan, I don't believe we have any for this evening, is that correct? All right, then, we'll move on to item six on our agenda, which is our consent agenda, and as we have done in the past, because we are in electronic meeting mode, we need to go ahead and do a roll call votes on this one. So Ms. Giddo, it asks that you call the role, or, nope, first, I need a motion on the consent agenda. What am I doing? But somebody would like to make a motion regarding our consent agenda.
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Downs, and now, Ms. Giddo, will you call the role?
Okay, thank you. Dr. Anderson.
Yes, thanks.
Dr. Dimick.
Yeah.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And with that, now we're moving on to our business and action items for tonight, and our first is an update on a big day. And Dr. Noonan, our school opening update.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Good evening, everybody. It's really great to see you. Today was a huge day for us here in the City of Falls Church. As our speaker earlier indicated, about a month ago, we were able to bring back many of our special needs students that had the greatest needs, and many of our English speakers of other languages, and today really represented the first day of us bringing back the next wave, or the beginnings of Wave 2, where we're starting to see grade levels come back to the City of Falls Church. So today, we had an opportunity to welcome our kindergarten students at Mount Daniel Elementary and our third-grade students at Thomas Jefferson Elementary, and in the midst of all of this, it was quite a day, and I think you're looking at a few people up here that are a little bit tired, but not nearly probably as tired as those teachers today. I was the first day on their feet all day long, and visiting them and seeing them and talking to them was really, really something special. So this evening, what I thought we would do is just kind of share some pictures with you, and it's one of those things where we were sending, and I want to thank John Brett for kind of pulling these together. We were sending John pictures throughout the day from Twitter and from pictures that we were taking, and you never know what's going to end up there until you get to this meeting. So I share that with you, because I'm not a big fan of pictures of myself, but there might be a couple in here. And the first is, and some of you saw this on Twitter, it was an early day, both at Mount Daniel and at Thomas Jefferson. I spent the entire day at Mount Daniel along with Mr. Anderson, who was there for a tour, along with Mr. Bates, and Kristin Michael was able to make it for a little while, and Dang and his team were there, working really hard, and Ms. Minson was at Thomas Jefferson, and we'll talk about that in just a second. But I want to send just a quick thank you to our PTA, our elementary PTA, because the work that they did to sort of make today special, as we made the return for those teachers and those students, really came through, and what you see on the screen right now is they did something called chalk the walk, and so they put some chalk out, and students came yesterday and the day before and wrote slogans on the sidewalk, drew pictures on the sidewalk, and as you came in in the morning, it was just such a wonderful thing to see as you walked up to the front door. So some of them were Smile and Wear Your Mask, another was Have a Great Day Hippos, and there were similar slogans being discussed at Thomas Jefferson as well. The next slide is the one that snuck in there. I don't know how it got in there, but I'll share it with you anyway, and that is that we had an opportunity, I had an opportunity today to do something I hadn't ever done, and that was, I was a bus aide, along with Tricia Minson was a bus aide, for the midday transportation run, so where we were going around and dropping off students from the morning session and picking up the afternoon session students, and the reason that I was there doing that is that everybody needs to chip in, and we were down a bus aide, and we were down two bus aides, and Tricia took one, and I took one and made it work, but this is me, actually, I'm in full PPE there, I've got a face shield, a mask, I've got blue gloves, and I'm saying hello to a kindergartner who's new to Mount Daniel and taking their temperature there as the parents were watching from the other side of the fence. So it was quite a day, and I got a great, great ride from our great bus driver. So when you get to Thomas Jefferson, here are some of the things that you'll see as you walk up, is you're going to see PPE, and you're going to see where students, where our teachers are digging in, they're utilizing all of the appropriate testing protocols, whether it's temperature testing, they're also using gloves, they're using the face shields, they're using masks, so if you need one, you can take one, but there's a ton available. And in the middle of the screen, what you'll see is little social distancing pause, and those are scattered throughout Thomas Jefferson, and there are hippo feet scattered throughout Mount Daniel as well, to really remind students, you know, what does six feet look like, what do six feet feel like, and a good visual reminder of that for our students. I had an opportunity, along with Ms. Russell was at Thomas Jefferson again, and Mr. Anderson, Dr. Anderson was at Mount Daniel, to visit some classrooms today, and got a chance to walk into all of them at Mount Daniel that were in session at least once, and most of them twice. I got to do the Rise and Shine song with our fun kindergarteners today, and really enjoyed myself, but what you see here is a picture of Mr. Sikora's kindergarten class, where he's doing his daily calendar math and talking with kids about the number 52, because today is the 52nd day of school, in case you didn't know that. So he's got some straws that he's putting into his, into his calendar, and he and his paraprofessional were really funny and did a really great job, but the big idea here is that you'll see the spacing between students. Our students are very clearly six feet apart or more. All of our students today had no problems wearing their masks throughout the entire day. There was one young person where it kept slipping down below his nose, and we kept reminding him to pull it up, and he was doing that, but I want to assure the board and assure our community that all of our kindergarten students did a fantastic job, wearing their masks today, sanitizing, washing their hands, and keeping their social distance. So what you'll see here is a couple of classrooms that look like that. The other, on the right-hand side, is a classroom where there's actually boxes that have been taped out, so students know this is sort of where my desk is supposed to be, and this is my space, but also on the right-hand side, one of the things you'll see hanging off the desk in the back is a blue circular, a blue circular soft pillow, essentially. You see those on all of them, some of them are orange and red and yellow. Those are little sitapons that students can move around the room with as well, but also maintain that six feet of social distance. I wanted to just briefly talk about ventilation, because that has been a question that's come up a number of times, and I want to assure the board that we have refined all of our ventilation systems at all of the schools to allow the maximal outdoor air in through the ventilation system, and here you'll see some windows open, but even if the windows weren't open, we are returning more than what OSHA suggests is the appropriate amount of air into the building. So we're returning clean air routinely, so that's been great, and Sevi and Kristin and their team have been working on also upgrading the filters at all of our schools as well. Here's a couple more pictures from Thomas Jefferson. We see Amanda Davis, our very able assistant and principal over at TJ, doing some temperature checks, as some of our walkers came into the building, just for the good of the board and for our community who may be listening at home. Our walkers do get their temperature checked as they walk in the door, our bus riders get temperature checked before they get on the bus, and our riders get their temperature checked before they come in, before they get out of the car. So we are making sure that we're getting those temperatures checked. Here, you'll see another classroom. This is a classroom at Thomas Jefferson. These are some third graders that are really excited to be back, and then there's a big post-it, and that's a calendar-sized post, or like a newsprint-sized post-it that was outside at TJ today that said, "Welcome to our classroom. I'm so happy you are finally back." And I would say this to the board, and I want to be really clear, that the staff, depending on who you talk to, is really excited to be back. So I talked to pretty much everybody at Mount Daniel, and there are a few people that are nervous, rightfully so, but on balance, everybody's really excited to be back, and the morale today was really high, because they got a chance to see students for the first time in a long time. So there are some questions that you may have received in the last couple of days about the morale of teachers, but I do want to assure you that the morale at our elementary schools, as the students are coming back and seeing face-to-face what it's like to have kids back in the building, has gone up. So you'll see here in the next slide, a couple of folks, including our TJ Tiger there, wearing an appropriate face shield. Now, that is an optional piece of PPE for our staff if they wish to wear that, unless they are taking temperatures. We ask that those that are taking temperatures try to also wear a face shield. And then here, you'll see a couple more classrooms, and the really cool thing about this classroom that you'll see is, this is a classroom where students are face-to-face, and they're also live streaming on the Aver camera. So you'll see the Aver camera, much like we're using tonight, sort of in the background there, and so the students who are in class are on the screen, and students are interacting with the teacher, and we saw that at all grade, at both grade levels today, and it was really a powerful moment, as our students engaged not only with their classmates and each other, but also with the teacher electronically and in person. So those are a few, a few pictures of the first day of school. I would say, because of the incredible planning of our teams led by William Bates and Kristin Michael and Tricia's work helping us and Dang's team and everyone else, today was a 10 out of 10. We had a really great day. Our kids were excited. I'll just share one quick anecdote. I was obviously at Mount Daniel, and we had a kindergartner walking, a walker, walking up with her father, and Jed Jackson, the school counselor, was out there and said, "Hey," and called her by name, and she looked over, and she kind of looked back, and she looked up at her dad, and she started laughing, and she said, "That's Mr. Jackson! That's Mr. Jackson!" Because remember, this is the first time these kids have seen these people in person. So it was really exciting to see the faces of our, of our young learners seeing, seeing their teachers for the first time, and really engaging in some impressive ways. So that's just a very brief rundown of how the day went. You know, like any first day of school, our buses, you know, we had a few hiccups here and there, we had some kids we had to bring back to school because parents weren't quite at the bus stop yet and whatnot, but I will tell you, for the Mount Daniel loop, and I can't speak for the TJ loop, but the Mount Daniel loop did it perfectly within an hour. The teachers were able to wipe down their classrooms in 10 minutes, so they got a full 50 minutes of time in between the AM and the PM session to, to kind of rest and relax and get ready to start the day again, eat their lunch, and it was just, just an exciting day. So I'm happy, Chair Anderson, to take any, any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. I'd like to open it up for members. I do have some things I want to say, but open it up for anybody who has comments or questions at this point, and ask again, please put your hand up so I can, I can call. Ms. Downs, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. We had a, our third grader started today, and I just want to compliment everyone. We, I drove him, and it was smooth. I was in and out in five minutes, both for drop-off and pickup, and he had a huge smile on his face and said that his teacher was taller than he expected. So, but he just, you know, he just was just so excited, just bouncing off the walls. He was so excited, so thank you, and as I said, from my perspective, it couldn't have gone smoother. A lot, I just wondered, if you wouldn't mind me to ask a question, we, you know, the school boards received a couple letters recently about the health metrics, and I was wondering if you wouldn't mind speaking to, you know, that I think some people are looking at, you know, is it, we, it looks like we're trending a little bit more in the darker orange, and I know that you have been having weekly calls with Fairfax County, that you've been using that information as well. I was hoping, if you wouldn't mind, just expanding on that a little bit?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you for that opportunity. I'll be perfectly candid with you and with the community that we are nervous about, about the spread of virus. What we're seeing from the, and hearing from the Fairfax County Health District is that there is a gentle rise in the northern Virginia region, and that be, that is then sort of tipping some of our radial dials, if you will, into the darker orange. The areas of concern for us, obviously, they're all areas of concern, but those that we're paying particular attention to is continuing to look at how we are ranked or rated, whether we're in the moderate, or whether we're in the low, or we're in the high, and so we continue to be in the moderate, and on our continuum, we've said, in the moderate range, we would continue with a hybrid, online, and then hybrid. And, and the other piece of information, there are two more pieces of information that I think are important. The other is transmission rates. We're paying very close attention to transmission rates, because that could indicate a community spread. And the last is, what does the City of Falls Church look like? Because I also think that that's important. We are not an island. We've made that case before, and that is absolutely true, but what we do know also is that the students that we're serving at the youngest levels, our elementary students, are the least likely to, one, have either get COVID, or two, to transmit COVID, and that's been made very clear to us from the data, from research that's been done, and peer-reviewed studies, and so we've been watching that, and the City of Falls Church has the lowest transmission rate of anyone in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so we've got to look at all of these measures and metrics sort of in combination to make good decisions, but I will tell you that if we get into the high level, even in the region, that would mean that we would probably not dial up. We probably would hold the dial where we are and likely not dial. probably not dial up. We probably would hold the dial where we are and likely not dial back because we have found success. In fact, Rebecca Sharp, our Empress of COVID, went through all of the, all of the data that we have about the kids that we have seen for the last month. And there has been zero cases in the City of Falls Church schools. We had, of students, we had one teacher in the last month that tested positive, but it was not from here. She was teaching online. She quarantined and, and stayed in quarantine because she was teaching remotely. But we have not had one case of, of transmitted COVID in a month that we've been in session. So we're watching these metrics very closely. Someone indicated in one of the emails that we're not reevaluating. And I want to assure the community and the board that we are reevaluating every week when we get the data from the Fairfax County Health Department and from the Virginia Department of Health. And, and I want to just say one last thing, and that is that we all, we all want the same thing. You know, we, we do want to bring our kids back, but at the end of the day, we want all of our kids to be safe. And so to, to somehow suggest that we're not all on the same page is, is a little bit worrisome to me. So I, I just want to assure the board and the community that we're not going to do anything that we believe would put students at risk. The mitigation strategies, the work that's happened, and you saw it in the classrooms today from the pictures, are those strategies that will keep our students safe.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Noonan. And a quick follow-up. If I read the morning announcements correctly, and those health, the clock or the dials or whatever, those are, that's how we're looking at the surrounding regions, right? And are we going to add one that's Falls Church city-specific? Was that, was I understanding that correctly or not? Something in morning announcements about?
Yeah, we, we are. We're going to add a couple of pieces of language, but those, those radio dials that you see are the regional data.
Right, right.
We are going to include case numbers here in the City of Falls Church as well.
I had read something in morning announcements. I wasn't quite sure.
And that'll help balance out the story a little bit as well.
Right, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Are there other comments or questions from anyone? Mr. Webb, I was looking in your direction too. Don't worry. Seeing none from anyone else, I'll take a moment to reflect a little bit on, on this morning at Mount Daniel. I did have the opportunity to be there for about an hour at the start of the day when, when the students came back. And my overall impression just starts with, it was a very smooth process. The preparation and the planning that Mr. Kasich and Mr. Farrar and the teachers and the staff and everyone involved in the planning at Mount Daniel have put into their, their opening was just evident from the start. The work that Mr. Bates and Ms. Sharp and is, I'm just having a night where I'm losing my brain right now. But all the work that went into that and Ms. Michael, your team with the transportation and with the food services work, all of the preparation clearly, clearly just stood out. Everybody just, the, the buses arrived, students were inside and learning within 15 minutes. And I then had the opportunity to walk through the, through the school escorted by Mr. Bates and Mr. Farrar. And thank you very much. That was the, an excellent thing. But being able to have the chance to step into the classroom and see what was going on and within, as I say, 15 minutes of getting off the bus, the students were learning, they were engaged, they were active. I was hearing call and responses. I was hearing people talking about their mornings. And we had a moment to ask, are you guys excited to be in here? Pretty much every class we went in. And I think the thing that's important to note is there were classes in which there were students who, who said they didn't put their hands up. They were sort of thinking about whether they wanted to respond. And I thought that was a useful indicator to me that these were kids who were engaged and thinking and all of this working was really, really, really strong. So I just want to say thank you to everybody at Mount Daniel, to everybody at Central Office, Dr. Noonan, to you and, and the entire team that clearly put in an amazing amount of work. We've known. Somebody asked me the other day, this was the, all the work that we were doing worth it. And I can tell you that at 8:30 this morning, it would, the answer is absolutely yes. And it was everything I could do just to keep myself from crying a little bit. Actually, I was really pleased. So thank you. It was wonderful.
Thank you very much. And I would do miss if I didn't really give a special shout-out to, to our Empress of COVID. And Rebecca Sharp has, has done an extraordinary job supporting the principals and the schools with putting together their, their plans and their planning documents and has supported us with some great communications and really has taken, taken a huge role in doing this work. So thank you.
I'm just looking to see if there's any other thoughts. Otherwise, I think we're, again, thank you everyone for all the work. And I think we'll go ahead now and we'll move on to item 7.02, our legislative update. And I believe we have another person we're bringing in, Lola Wise and Mr. Webb is on the other end as well. So I believe, Dr. Noonan, do we have Ms. Wise now at this point?
I, Ms. Wise, I promoted you to panelist. There we go. I think she's, she's there. So, Mr. Webb, if it's all right with you, may I tee this up for you?
I, definitely. That is fine with me. Thank you, Dr. Manon.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Yes, you can.
Okay, thanks. So before I turn it over to Mr. Webb and Ms. Wise, I just want to remind the, the board that tis the season as the legislature wraps up one special session and gets ready to start their next regular session, that this is the season where we start thinking about where will our advocacy reside with respect to coming legislation and budget topics. So I had a really great meeting with Mr. Webb last week where we talked about a couple of different points of advocacy with respect specifically to some of the positions that the VSPA was looking at, some of the positions that VAS was looking at, and then also some positions that Lola Wise shared with us as well. And what we put together was sort of the document that came out in board docs that showed sort of local decision or local, local advocacy and then a more broad strategy of how do you want to think about positions across the Commonwealth with respect to your respective organization, VSPA and the like. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Webb and I, I believe that he and, and Lola are going to walk through, through the document a little bit with you. So thank you both for, Lola, thank you for being here and Mr. Webb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Manon. And Lola, thank you for being here as well to kind of discuss this a little bit more as well. But this is our first kind of crack at some positions that we would like to go down to Richmond with this in particular, this upcoming session. Biggest things I, that highlights for me of making sure that we are going down there is making sure that funding that was taken out from the pandemic will come back on teacher raises, was legislation that was in the funding for us. We also want to make sure the whole harmless is, is another piece that we want to make sure that when we get to come to us that we would get numbers of students that are in the school, that we continue to get the, the same amount of funding that we are entitled to and not be held responsible because potential of student, losing some students who may make choice to not come back to Falls Church for whatever reason, they may, the families may have chosen to. We are also looking at some different areas of making sure that with sales tax, the continuation of sales tax revenue held harmless. We are also going to be looking at some additional funding. We, we've already reached out to Delegate Simon and Senator Sasselaw, talking to them about those areas as well, that we want to make sure that we have recognized within our, our budgetary areas. One second. One of the other big areas that we are looking at is with the support of the continuation of the cost of competing factors and restoration of funding for inclusion of all support staff in the reimbursement formula for our planning district. That's another big area. Again, we are continuing to see that shortage of teachers and we want to make sure that we in the region are able to continue to compete for that. And then some of the extended areas that I want to highlight that we are going, that our suggestions that we look at for our upcoming legislative package are the equality opportunities for all learners, which COVID-19 has really pointed out that there are some, some gaps across the state within the different areas when it comes to fair receiving of the online learning that's out there. So one of the big areas that we want to make sure that we show our support for, for state is making sure that broadband is something that is continually funded to make sure that all students across the Commonwealth have access to the online learning that we've all had to, to adjust to over the la, almost the last six to seven months now. So we want to make sure that all students have that ability to be able to continue to learn in this new environment. Again, also want to, again, making sure that we are part of coalition of, within the state to make sure that all school divisions receive all the fundings that they need within the COVID-19 crisis that, to make sure that we are picking up all the parts that we need to make sure that we are, are taking care of our students in the best way possible. We do recognize that there are some, some pieces that have fallen short, but we are hoping that the state will help us make sure that we are covered in a, in a positive way, recognize that we are within this COVID-19 crisis. And then the last area I want to mention before I turn over to Ms. Wise to kind of talk a little bit about it, the package as well, is the modern, modernizing of the assessment system to strengthen Virginia's standards of learning. We know that SOLs are one of the big things that happens across the state, but we would love to, to support reductions of required SOL assessments to minimum required under the ESSA and the State Board of Education. And to look at some waivers for that, giving schools, giving schools the opportunity to change schedules to experience a year of impact, increase relevance of virtual learning, rethinking the sitwance of the school then. And I'll back up for one piece that we, Dr. Noonan and I talked about as well, and we as a board spoke about, I believe it was our last meeting, and that's our school calendar. I would like for us to put in there an option for us to speak for the State Board of Ed, of Education to give some flexibility within the start of the before and after Labor Day start, where we generally would give the Friday before Labor Day to make sure it's a four-day weekend, to give us some flex, school districts some flexibility for that. Dr. Noonan, if you would help me, the, there's a holiday this year that if we were able to do it, we're doing that this year because it falls within that starting period of this upcoming school year. It would be beneficial to us to go from the Friday to the Tuesday after Labor Day so that the continuity versus, we would close on the Friday and then we'd close on the Tuesday because of the, I believe it's Rosh Hashanah, I believe, Dr. Manon?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So that we have some flexibility of that. And that's not going to be something that happens all the time, but giving the flexibility to be able to have that versus always having to reach out to the State Board of, the head of the Virginia Department of Education on a regular basis, asking for a potential waiver from the Superintendent of Education. But with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Wise and see and let her speak a little bit about the package as well.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. At the end of this last session, we came home with the idea that this has been one of the best sessions that we ever had. Some of the things that we've been asking for, for many years, being able to open school before Labor Day, things like that, we had them. And a lot of good funding. Unfortunately, things have happened, as you know, since then. And there's a lot of things that we thought we were going to have for this next school year that we didn't. Two of the big areas, and I think these are ones that, that Mr. Webb talked about. The first is, you probably all know that sales tax revenue is a big thing for school divisions. And of course, with COVID, sales tax revenue is way down. And so what we're requesting is that we be held harmless, that we be able to get the same amount of funding in, for sales tax revenue than we have had in the past. And the same thing applies to ADM. And what we're asking is that we, average daily membership looks to me like a lot of places all the way across the Commonwealth are losing kids. And so you get your funding based on average daily membership. And so again, asking for a hold harmless there so that school divisions are not going to get a huge loss of their funding from the state. Other than that, oh, we all were very happy with the add-on, at risk, the at-risk add-on funding that was added last year. And again, asking for us to be able to have that. But this, it's very interesting because yesterday was the last day of the last session because you had a special session, then you had another special session, then you were dealing with the budget. And it wasn't until yesterday that all of that finished. And it, they, the General Assembly did have an opportunity to see how will it work if we are acting virtually. And it was pretty interesting because the Senate chose that you would have everybody there in person, whereas the House chose that everybody would be working virtually. We don't know what it's going to be like for this next session. When Mr. Webb said, "When we go to Richmond this next year," I don't know whether we will be going to Richmond this next year, whether I will getting, really get used to all this virtual stuff because we're going to do all our lobbying virtually. But again, we have two of the, the most wonderful legislators who represent Falls Church. We have Delegate Simon and he is in the leadership in the House. And of course Senator Sasselaw, who is the majority, uh, majority leader in the Senate. We really have a lot of influence that we haven't necessarily had in the past. So they are very, very willing to try and do whatever it is that we need to and we will definitely keep in touch with them. Thank you. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you, that you might have.
Thank you, Lola, Ms. Wise. And yeah, we're, all of us are open to questions that the board may have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Webb. Thank you, Ms. Wise. Questions from members at this point on the legislative package and Ms.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Thank you, Ms. Wise. Two quick questions. One, the funding for support services and the support staff cap, that was nothing to do with COVID, right? That's from way back with the recession. Is that correct?
You're absolutely right. It had, happened in 2009. So it's been a long time and that has never been restored.
Okay. That's something we're all concerned about because those are our most, in a lot of cases, those are students, the students who are seeing who need more and more support and we don't have the funding for that staff. So thank you. I thought that was, that had been something that had happened a while back. And second of all, I wanted to ask, you know, our neighboring jurisdictions are looking at having time off for the Jewish holidays. So I didn't know if anyone else, if you were aware, Ms. Wise, if any of the other school systems have jumped on to the idea of getting some flexibility with maybe instead of giving that Friday before Labor Day off, the Tuesday, in this case, this should be Rosh Hashanah. If you've seen any of our neighboring jurisdictions sort of jump on to that idea.
Now, now I know Montgomery County, Maryland has had that idea for years. I have not heard whether Fairfax is, and of course I work for both Alexandria and Arlington, and we don't have it in our package, which doesn't mean that we shouldn't have it or that we won't have it by the time the session starts. If that is an area that you all would like for us to If that is an area that you all would like for us to add to the to the package, I'm sure that Mr. Webb and I can work something out.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. And you are correct. I would definitely like to work with you on potentially getting the minimal Arlington and Alexandria
Sure.
to potentially look at this as well. And I, if we, there's an opportunity to, that I have an opportunity to speak with someone in Bearbacks, I will have that conversation as well. I think it's a good opportunity for the region to, to work together on something of level of flexibility that, that would give all of us who maybe look into expand our calendar a little bit.
Because of course, when we first started doing the opening of school, what we wanted to do was allow school boards to have the flexibility to determine their, their calendars. And so maybe we can go back at it this year with that and then as, if that doesn't work, then go with you know, the extending the Labor Day holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Any other questions from anyone? Ms. Snyder?
So I don't have any questions, but just a couple of quick comments, I guess. I agree with what Ms. Downs and Mr. Webb have said about including Rosh Hashanah and asking to have that Tuesday off instead of the Friday. So it would be great if that could be added. And I also just wanted to say that it's wonderful that there's the part of the legislative package focusing on modernizing the assessment system because I know there's been an ongoing dialogue about whether we should be measuring for like proficiency versus growth and whether these standardized tests are the best way to assess student progress. And especially in the midst of the pandemic, it seems like a reasonable time to reconsider standardized testing in Virginia.
Well, if you all are interested, the State Board of Education is going to have workshops on Thursday and Friday where they, for the public, where they are going to talk about what their policy issues are that they are going to be addressing. And so if you don't have anything else to do Thursday or Friday, just go to the State Board website and sign on and, and listen to what they're saying because I think it's going to be pretty interesting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Snyder. And Ms. Wise, are there other, other comments, other questions on the legislative package from anyone? Mr. Webb and Ms. Wise, I'll just say, I also would love to see that flexibility for the calendar in, in our package and if we can convince our neighbors into a similar, similar state, I think that would actually be really helpful. And so I think that's something I definitely would like to, to place an emphasis on.
Absolutely. Yep.
All right, Mr. Webb, I see your hands up.
Just very briefly, just wanted to thank Ms. Wise for coming on and looking forward to working as we get this package together. And thank you for all that you have done for us for done in, and potentially virtually this upcoming session.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And, and thank you, Ms. Wise. Thank you, Mr. Webb. I don't see any other comments. We'll go ahead and, and move forward to our next item on the agenda. Item 7.03 and CARES Act appropriation.
Okay. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk a little bit tonight about our CARES Act appropriation. We would like to ask sort of a procedural question here simply because the items that are listed, this, this item and the next actually have the same document attached to it. So if it would be all right to talk about both items at the same time, that would be much appreciated. So we could start with sort of the overall CARES Act piece, and then we would actually get into the compensation because a portion of the compensation for the staff is actually coming from the CARES Act.
So I think, Dr. Noonan, I think it's fine to talk about the two items as one, and I'm looking for Ms. Minson to make sure that that's correct. But we'll, we'll take action on the two items independently.
Yes, that's correct. In fact, we have two motions in there.
Right. So I think we can talk about 7.03 and 7.04 together, have the discussion as a package and then take action separately.
Great. So thank you so much for that. I'm going to actually turn the first part of this over to Ms. Michael to talk about the CARES Act. And then when we get down to compensation, I'll pick up from there.
Thank you so much. I appreciate from the school board, the opportunity to discuss CARES Act funding. On October 7th, 2020, Governor Northam announced a new statewide allocation of more than 220 million in federal coronavirus recovery and economic security, also known as CARES Act funding, to schools across the United States in K to 12. That funding was to support preparedness and response measures for the pandemic during this current school year. And it included things like testing supplies, personal protective equipment, sanitation and technology for distance learning. The funding was distributed to all of the school divisions across the state of Virginia, and they used a per pupil funding formula of $175 per student with a minimum allocation to each jurisdiction of $100,000. So that funding to Falls Church totaled $453,180. And also earlier this fall, Dang Nguyen and his team applied technology grant and we received $11,920.50 towards to help support our purchase of cameras for our classrooms. And then we also had received earlier this fall, $322,000 from our general government in CARES Act funding to help us address the pandemic. And then in our original budget for FY21, we had $37,000 in CARES Act funding. So the majority of the CARES Act funding all has to be spent by December 31st. And the state has been really clear, even with this additional allocation of the 453,000, that it literally has to be spent. So the goods and services have to be received and we have to make sure we have the payments made by that date. So we can use our CARES Act funding and we're planning on using it for things like purchasing in the cameras and technology you see in the classroom. So today, when you were visiting schools at both Mount Daniel and Thomas Jefferson, you saw setups just like what we have here in the, the board meeting tonight, a TV with a camera on top. So the students could engage in the classroom and at home. And we'll also use it for online connections. We've been supporting our students who didn't have connections at home with MiFi devices. And we've used it to support supervised virtual learning for our staff. And also to provide substitute coverage for employees who are out. So we do have employees who are out for COVID and either to help with a replacement or to provide support while they're out. And we've used it to provide supervised virtual learning for our staff's students. So they can be teaching fully during the day and their students have a place to go to complete their online learning. We're talking to you tonight about using it to compensate our employees for additional responsibilities that are above and beyond their job directly related to the COVID pandemic. For personal protective equipment, facilities, sanitation and cleaning, including upgrading our filtering. For signage throughout the building, you'll see we have signs reminding people to wear your mask or maintain your distancing. And, and the like. So the full details of the CARES Act funding as we go through and are finishing making our purchases, we'll include that in our monthly budget monitoring report. So last month, we had started summarizing what the funding was and we'll be coming back to you with how we've spent that funding. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Noonan, who's going to talk about asking the board for approval for spending some of that this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. As you may recall in our work session, a couple of weeks ago, I, I shared with you the idea of really taking, taking a chance to step up and do something for our employees for all of the work that they have done. You may recall in the, in the summer, when it was determined that our budget really wasn't going to be what we thought our operational budget was going to be. I made a commitment to the staff that I would try to look for ways to provide compensation wherever I could, either throughout the year or collectively at the end of the year and rolling it towards some sort of either one-time increment or to look at doing some sort of additional raise somewhere else. And the reason and the rationale for that is that our staff has really had a significant impact on their work, their workload and their lives as, as the result of COVID-19. And we, as we've transitioned from the online, all online to the hybrid, the amount of extra time that's been required to develop materials and resources has been extraordinary, not to mention all of the extra time material and resource that was utilized to just get us up and going in the online environment. So, so looking at and recognizing that additional work that's resulted from the pandemic. Tonight, we are seeking approval for a $1,000 one-time increment for every contracted and long-term hourly employee who's not on a long-term leave status during the 2020, 2021 school year. This one-time increment will be funded through a combined effort really of available balance that we have, as well as some of the CARES Act funding that was discussed this evening. To ensure that all of the CARES Act expenditures meet the federal requirements, we want to confirm that between March 1st, 2020 and December 15th, 2020, each of the individuals that have been identified for that $1,000 increment, receive that with the CARES Act has gone above and beyond, as Ms. Michael indicated, their standard contract hours and have done typical work to make sure that we are set for both our online, our hybrid, and ultimately our return. So some of those things that are above and beyond that we want to recognize are learning new technology in order to facilitate the hundred 100% online distance learning for students due to closing because of COVID-19, developing online learning systems for students, developing online learning capabilities for themselves in order to facilitate the 100% online learning during the COVID-19. Engaging in new technology and training in order to facilitate that distance learning, reviewing communications to family, families and staff members and also developing communications with families and staff members regarding state and regional public health under related COVID-19, including FCCPS new safety protocols and procedures in preparation for our return to learn. And then also looking at how are we appropriately sanitizing and making sure that we're doing the work necessary to ensure that our students and our staff are safe when they come into school. So we plan to ultimately develop a list of, of individuals whose work went above and beyond and met those criteria. But we acknowledge that these tasks as part of this do constitute a substantially different workload than we have ever asked them to do before. And it's time for us to really, in some ways, step up and do the right thing by, by all of our staff. The estimated cost of providing this one-time increment is $506,000. And the amount of the CARES Act funding utilized will be detailed after the analysis of applicable individual work completed. And the reason we added that is because there is going to be some one-time funding utilized to pay a $1,000 bonus to other employees who may not have met all of that criteria, but were verging on that criteria. So we have to really be clear to separate out between the CARES Act and our local funds so that we meet the spirit of the CARES Act. But we do want to make sure that everyone gets that $1,000 increment. So with that, I'll turn it back to Ms. Michael to talk about the operating fund available balance.
When we look at the available balance funding in our school operating fund, and all of this information is posted on the website for the public and anyone who's listening. Our year-end available balance at the end of FY20 was $2,831,744. Of that, we did include $450,000 in budgeted beginning balance in FY21. So that budgeted beginning balance that we have in our budget for this year is some of the funding that we would like to use from our ending balance to help cover any part of that increment that's not covered by the CARES Act funding.
So what, what you have before you are two motions. One is about approving the appropriation increase and the other is about approving the appropriation expenditure. We really believe that it's all of us together that will ultimately support our, our teachers and staff and are asking the board to approve that, that $1,000 increment. That's all for us.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, and thank you, Ms. Michael. I want to open it up for questions from members. And Ms. Downs, you go ahead.
Chair Anderson, thank you, Ms. Michael. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. A quick question. Do we have any, were you all able to ballpark, you know, how many staff would, first of all, I'm in complete support of this idea. I, you know, the teachers and staff have gone above and beyond. I just wanted to say that. I just was curious if we, if you all were able to ballpark how many would fall under that CARES funding and how many would not, and we would have to, you know, and if we wouldn't be surprised that all of a sudden, oh, it's more people than we thought that are not. Okay. So I would, I assumed you all did your homework as usual and we're good with that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Do you have the answer to the question that you're seeking?
You got a lot of nodding.
Now that we're here, I can't see her to communicate with us.
With the mask though, because we're nodding and smiling at the same time.
Thanks. The, part of the reason I asked is to make sure that Mr. Webb can also see the, the interaction. So are there other questions on this item, either of these two actions? Ms. Running.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. A quick question. I know you don't yet know what percentage of staff would meet the CARES Act requirements and that you'd use the year-end balance or other sources of funding to make the increments for them. Depending upon what that division is between people who meet the requirements, people who don't meet the requirements, do you have ready other places so that the CARES Act funding can be spent under the, under the restrictions to make sure that we don't not spend any funding and lose it?
Yes, thank you for that question. Maximizing the amount of CARES Act funding that we spend is absolutely critical. Right? The state has asked us to certify that we will be able to spend all of the money that we've been allocated. And we have responded that yes, we will be able to spend it all and have those goods and services received. So our goal is going to be to maximize our CARES Act funding first, ensure we're spending that on our highest priority, and then use whatever balance we need remaining from our year-end balance.
And in the event that we go through the list and there's still additional CARES money because we've, we've just met the extent that we could utilize the CARES Act for the staff that have been above and beyond. We absolutely have a list of additional things that we would purchase with CARES Act money. To include things like more PPE, more cleaning supplies, more filter, filters, air handling unit filters and the like.
Just one other follow-up question. Thank you. Do you need any action from the board on that to make sure that you can spend the funding tonight? I just want to make sure you don't get in a position where if the division is different and you need to spend the funding, that we'll need to come back and have the board approval for that expenditure and then it won't be timely based on our meeting cadence.
What we have in the first motion this evening is for the school board to approve the appropriation or allowing us to expend the full amount of CARES Act funding that we received. And then the beginning balance funding of 450 is already included in our current budget appropriations. So we believe this action tonight will fully cover this expenditure.
Thank you, Ms. Running. Or any other, anyone else have questions on this? I'm looking at Mr. Webb too. So I just want to make sure, I'm going to build on Mr. Iger's question just to be really explicit. And in some sense, the first action that you're asking us to approve tonight is to increase the, effectively the spending limit on the budget for this year so that we can use the money that has already been given to us under the CARES Act, under that spending limit. That's option, that's step one is to raise that. And then step two is actually to expend it. It would be the second motion to actually authorize the expenditures.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Any, any other thoughts, any other comments on this? All right. And Ms. Minson, we have the two motions, so we need to take two different motions now in sequence. I just want to make sure I'm, okay. All right. Well, not seeing any other comments and I'm looking around the room virtually and in person. I would seek a motion regarding the CARES Act appropriation under item 7.03. Mr. Redinger.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the Falls Church City School Board approve an appropriate increase in the School Board Operating Fund. school board operating fund of $453,180 to authorize the expenditure of additional CARES Act funds that the Commonwealth of Virginia is awarding to FCCPS, and $322,000 in CARES Act funds that were allocated to FCCPS by the city council to respond to the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Is there a second?
I can.
Not sure who, who got that one. Thank you, Dr. Dimick, for the second. I would say, Ms. Reitinger, I noticed one word that we need to correct. You said appropriate instead of appropriation. So for the record, can we make sure that the, the motion reflects that we're saying an appropriation increase? And Ms. Kittle, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yeah.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Thank you. And then I would seek now a motion regarding item 7.04, compensation for staff. Ms. Downs?
Chair Anderson, I move that the Falls Church City School Board approve expenditures of $775,180 to address COVID-19 mitigation efforts, including, I think that's supposed to say, providing a one-time increment of $1,000 for each contracted and long-term hourly employee who is not on a long-term leave status during the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Ms. Kittle, will you call the, the roll?
Yes. Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you, and motion passed.
Thank you all very much. No, it's very meaningful to our staff.
All right, thank you. And thank you. I'm glad that, glad we're able to, to move, move forward. All right, so let's, with that, now we're ready to move on to 7.05, which is sort of the beginning of next year's budget process, in some sense, with enrollment projections overview and Dr. Noonan and Ms. Michael, I assume you are?
I, I'm going to just say a quick, a quick thing, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Michael, because I did want to echo sort of your sentiment there is that, you know, normal, the normal business of the board and the school division does go on in the context of a pandemic, and this is the time of year where we continue to look or begin to look at our enrollment projections and the overview for the coming year as we begin to think about what the budget's going to look like as we head into the December meeting, that's the joint meeting with the city council. So, so tonight, Ms. Michael's going to roll through the enrollment overview and projections to give you a sense of where we are. And as you may recall, in the previous conversation, there were three different methodologies to look at with respect to enrollment overview, and we've, we think we've selected one. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Michael.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to discuss our enrollment projections this year from Weldon Cooper. So we wanted to start the process this year by kind of going over our current year enrollment, and as I look at that, it's very, very small on the screen. When we look at this chart, this chart shows our actual enrollment for fiscal year '17, '18, '19, and '20. Right? Those columns are listed. Then we have what the change was to the projection for 2021. What was the projection from Weldon Cooper for this current school year 2021? Then in the second to the right column, what was our enrollment as of September 30th? And then what was the variation with the projection? So if we look at the top line on the chart, it's kindergarten. If we look back to 2017, our actual was 191, right? If we look at where we were at last year, so in 2020, we had 181 students in kindergarten. Our projection was a decrease of 13, so we were projecting 168 kindergarten students. Our kindergarten enrollment as of September 30th was 132, so we had 36 fewer kindergarten students than we projected. So when you look at that chart overall, when we look at through K to 12, our actual student enrollment was 165 students lower than we projected. And when we add Jesse Backory preschool, overall, we were at 182 students currently fewer than we had projected for this year. So when you look at that, this is a graphic chart that kind of shows where that variance is. And visually, this lets you easily see that the biggest gap between our projected and our actual enrollment occurred at kindergarten and grade nine. So kindergarten is definitely been one of our harder years to project. And typically, when we look at ninth grade, we see more students enroll than we had in eighth grade. We tend to see students coming into our system, right? So in both of these cases, the places we have that largest gap are typically where we have students coming into the system. So it's hard to assess where they're at. But we'll talk in a little bit about enrollment across the state is, is lower than most schools had projected. So historically, when we look at our enrollment over time, this graph goes back to 2001, 2002 on the left, and it shows the enrollment each year, and there's a different color for each grade level. So pre-K is the color that's at the very bottom of each chart, and 12th grade is the top color of each chart. And this is a great visual way to just look at how that enrollment has changed over the years, to see the mixture of students. And then it also lets you see that our enrollment was kind of rising and rising and rising and had gotten a little bit flat since 2016, and how you can see our current year is lower than many of the preceding years. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our special populations for this current year before we go into the projections. These are new charts that we hope the board and the public will find really helpful. So this is English for speakers of other languages. Again, we have that multiple years data, so 2016, 17, 2018, 19, moving all the way through to the current year of 2021. And then the very last column shows the change from this year to the last year. Then this chart is also divided into three categories. The first group are students that are receiving ESAL services. The second part of the chart is students that are exiting ESAL, they've finished receiving their ESAL services. Some of you may have also heard these students in the past being called bridging, right? They're bridging out of ESAL. And then at the very bottom of the chart, we also do have some families that decline or refuse service, so they're down there at the bottom. So the number that we look at most frequently in terms of budgeting and planning and staffing is that number receiving services. And you can see that our current number of students this school year receiving services is 115, and that is a decrease of 33 students compared to the prior year. When we look at our other groups of students receiving services, this chart shows our students that are economically disadvantaged. We currently have 200, which is just five below the number we had last year. Students with disabilities are 322 as compared to 333 the prior year. And then the next two columns are students that are homeschooled and have religious exemptions. And you can see that those numbers typically were somewhere in the mid-20s. Last year, we had 23 students, and this year, that number increased to 69. So when we look at our 2020 projections and the factors that are influencing those, Weldon Cooper, the thing that is significantly impacting them right now are birth rates. So the projections that they did this year for birth rates, instead of just using Falls Church City, they used births from Falls Church as well as Alexandria Arlington, Fairfax, and Fairfax City. They said that when they looked at the data earlier this decade, just using Falls Church first was slightly more accurate in predicting kindergarten, but when they looked at the last five years, they realized that looking at births from those surrounding jurisdictions would have been a much better projector in terms of our kindergarten. So they made that change in these upcoming projections. And then just another note, overall births in Virginia have declined in the last couple of years, so just kind of taking that into account as well. Then they also noted, we spent, Michelle Copic was super helpful in this process, we spent a fair amount of time talking with Weldon Cooper this year as we sent them our data, really trying to ensure that we were getting the best value from our projection process, and they understood our jurisdiction really well. And, and I think they do, and one of the things they talked about is given the relatively small size of Falls Church, that new home construction really can impact our projections. So we've been working with the assessor, really trying to see if we can get a better handle on how to project future changes in housing, because we also know that that will have an impact, but it's not factored into these projections. So as a reminder, the enrollment projection process, each fall, we send our September 30th enrollment to the Cooper Center, which is the demographics research group at the University of Virginia. In addition to doing projections for us, they do them for other school divisions, and they also do the allocation that's used to allocate sales tax to all the jurisdictions across the state. When they're projecting our membership, they use birth data is what they're using to project kindergarten. And then they look at our historical and current membership, and they use a ratio formula to project each individual year's additional students. So the grade progression ratio is how they capture, it's a pattern of how our students move from one grade to the next. And they know that those grade progression ratios can fluctuate, so they use multiple years data when calculating those ratios. And that becomes the basis of their projection. So just a reminder on how they calculate them, they divide the number of students in a particular grade by the number of students that were in the previous grade the previous school year. So if the ratio is greater than one, right, that means there were more students coming in the school. And if it's smaller than one or less than 100%, more students left the school than came in. So when we look at our current grade progression ratios, I, I think this data is really telling and impossible to see way up on the screen in this room, so, so I'll try to talk through it. If we look at 2020 on the bottom line of this chart and our grade progression ratios, you can see that with the exception of fourth grade, eighth grade, 10th, 11th, and 12th, that all of our grade progression ratios are less than 100%. So we had more students leaving than we had coming in. And remember, kindergarten was that birth rate ratio, so it's a slightly different methodology. So this really helps you see how our enrollment for this current year is very different from the previous years, right? So for example, looking at the first grade, right, generally, we see more students in Falls Church City join us for first grade than were here in kindergarten, right? That's been true going back to 2011 in every year except two, this current year in 2017, for example. Right? And we also talked about, we generally see more students who join Falls Church in ninth grade. And you can see those grade progression ratios were all over 100%, even 111% last year. But for this current year, we were at 94%. Right? So that really does show you how different the data is this current year. And of course, that is a concern as we look at using this data to do a projection for next year, right? Because the COVID pandemic really has impacted enrollment. This chart on the next slide is just a graphic representation of those grade progression ratios. The nice thing I thought on this chart that Weldon Cooper provided is the kindergarten line is the line in red, and you can clearly see that that has the highest variance in terms of, of each year's projections. So when we look at the projections we receive for Weldon Cooper for next year, they provided us with three sets of projections, right? Typically, what they do is they calculate multiple sets of projections, and then based on their expertise, they send us the one that they believe is the best or the correct projections for the next year. So they sent us three, and they said that they believe that we were in the best place to determine which one of these would be the best. So when we look at all three of these projections, they all show a somewhat similar trend of enrollment decreasing in the short term, but rebounding slightly in the long term. So when we, when we look at number one, that progression or projection assumes that all of the students that were projected to enroll this fall don't come back. So the kids who didn't enroll in kindergarten won't be rejoining us in first grade, for example. Projection number two assumes that half of those students will come back. And then projection number three assumes all the students that didn't enroll this year will enroll next year. So perhaps this year, they didn't enroll because they're homeschooled, but next year they would come back. So this is the chart that shows what all of those projections are, exactly as they came from Weldon Cooper. But what we did is we made another chart that we thought was, in some sense, slightly easier, but, but maybe not, but I'll walk through it, and hopefully it will be helpful. So this chart shows, and these are in reverse order, so projection three is at the top. So you can see kindergarten, the projection was 172 students, first grade 175, and second grade 191, for a total at Mass Daniel of 538 students. When we compare that to our September 30th, that's 40 students more than we currently have in kindergarten, eight students more than we currently have in first grade, and 28 students more than we have in second grade, for 76 more students at Mass Daniel next year compared to this year. So that's how that chart works across. So in that projection number three, right, which was where all the kids were coming back, they see our enrollment going up in total by 197 students from, from where we're at right now. So projection two, right, again, you can see that kindergarten, they're still projecting that 170, but where you see that difference of them projecting only half of the kids would come back, that didn't appear in this year's projection, is instead of projecting 175 like they did in projection three for first grade, they're projecting 153. And then in that projection number one, where none of those students return, right, they're projecting for first grade 135 students. So we're not gaining back any of the students in projection one, we're gaining back half of the students in projection two, or 100% in projection three. So what that does in terms of total enrollment is projection three is up 197 students from current, projection two is up 76 students from current, and then projection number one shows no change in our enrollment from this current year. So the level of pandemic impacted enrollment that we're at now is where we would be next year in that projection. So this is just a graphic representation of what those three projections look like for the next year, and then what they look like in the out years. So you can see the projection two and three eventually, or one and two, excuse me, merged together, but projection three, where all the students come back, has a higher number of students in the far out years. Each year, we try to include a chart that looks at their projection accuracy, and if you look at for 2021 where we had COVID, we were at 92.8% of the projected enrollment enrolled, and that is significantly lower than we've seen in the prior years in terms of projection accuracy. And as I've talked to other jurisdictions around us, and as Bass had reported for the state, all of the jurisdictions were experiencing a similar change in their enrollment to projections as Falls Church did. Weldon Cooper also provides us with long-term projections through 20, or 2035, and these are those charts. This is a long-term projection comparison that we hope is helpful. So when you look at this, the school year is on the far left column, and then the first three columns are the three projection sets that they just gave us for this year. And then following that are the projections we received in the previous years, 19, 18, 17, 16, and 15. So if we look at 2021, which is next school year's projection, right, their projection set one would have us at 2,445 students. Projection two would have us at 2,534, and you keep going across. And you can see that all of those projections for 2021 are lower than the projections they had given us in 19, 18, 17, 16, and 15. So you can see that graphically on this chart, what these, this chart shows is in the three sets of bars on the left, those are the three projection sets for this year, and each year in the projection is a different color. So you can see how the trend in their projection sets number one, two, and three is really kind of consistent over the long term. And that's really consistent with the projections that they gave us in fall of 2019 in terms of the slope and where they think the out years are going. And then you can compare that with where they told us we would be looking back in 2018, 17. And then you can compare that with where they told us we would be looking back in 2018, 17, and 2016 when they were projecting pretty significant growth in the 2015. Right? I know we had talked previously about how good were the long-term projections, so we really hope that this is helpful. So overall, those are all the projections that they've given us. And we will continue to use these as we work to develop our budget. I think when we look at the projection sets of either having all of the students come back or none of the students come back, both of those seem pretty unrealistic. Right? So that makes projection set two, which has 50% of the students coming back, really seeming like the best projection that we have at this point. So thank you for the opportunity to present this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Michael. Questions from members?
Very interesting.
Yes.
I just want to make a quick observational comment about the data that we observed tonight. Because I think it's actually important to recognize sort of what is happening with the pandemic too with respect to who has resources and who doesn't. If you look at the number of ESOL students and if you look at the number of students that are on free and reduced lunch, those numbers didn't drop maybe by one or two students, but our overall division is down 160 plus. So the reasonable thought is that then who are those students that are going? They're not ESOL. They're not students that run free and reduced lunch. They're students that have additional resources. And so it is a concern to us that we're losing students. And we do hope that as time goes by, we'll be able to bring those students back. As we've been tracking the number of students on homeschool, for example, to 69, we did, in a number of occasions, we did reach out to them all and ask them to come back. To this point, I don't know that anybody has taken us up on that. But we did hear as soon as we're fully back open, they are going to return. So we are anxiously awaiting some returns, for sure. But I thought it was an interesting piece in the data of who's leaving and who isn't.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. That is an interesting observation. All right. Questions from anyone on the data, on the enrollment projections? Mr. Riedinger?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I guess my primary question relates to the data that's graphically demonstrated in Slide 16. Because, you know, up through around the 2015, 2016 timeframe, we had a significantly rising population over a year. It was more than linear. And then it started to bounce around and flatten out. And then going forward from here, even if you take the, all the students come back, we're roughly stabilizing long-term enrollment projections about where we are right now. And if not all the students come back, it would be below where we are right now. Do we have a sense of what the root cause behind that changeover is? I mean, I'm sure that there are different grade progressions and there are lower birth rates, but I'm trying to get a little bit behind that data to understand, you know, what's happening in the sense of, are there fewer kids or are they moving farther out? I really would like to see if it's possible to understand a little bit more about why we're doing that.
Sure. So what the Weldon Cooper Center staff told us is it's declining birth rates. It's declining birth rates in this region and the state that's really impacting that long-term growth. Right? And that could be changed as we look at Founders Row and the West End Development and those pieces coming on board. But what's really influencing the projections that they've given us so far for the out years is that declining birth rate.
One other question, and I've raised this, I think, once before. And I don't know if it's, if it makes sense or if staff ought to consider it. I would be a little curious to hear what some of our local experts, which is to say, realtors, have to say about population trends and people moving into and out of the city to see if there are sort of micro trends around the city that would be useful to understand. In particular, whether some of those things changed. You know, I know one of the things that could go into that data, for example, is there's been a lot of, you know, ripping out three-bedroom, one-bath Ramblers and putting in five-bedroom, four-bath Colonials or more. And that may be just that all the lots where that's possible has been exhausted. But I would think that there could be some local experts that might helpfully inform what we're doing. We may not need that level of detail, but it would be, it might be a useful exercise to ask a question.
Yes, it would absolutely be a useful exercise. And we started the projection process this fall with having a really in-depth conversation with Weldon Cooper. And they had actually said, if we can get them the data, right, that they would be willing to take a look at it to really help us try to forecast that. So we were working with the assessor, Ryan Davis, at the general government to get that data. They had stuff going on and some system issues, but they assured us that they would get us that data and that we could start to use that to really try to analyze the impact of those teardowns, how many were left, and really what's happening in each of those kind of development areas.
I would just add that prior to the pandemic, we were also engaged in a conversation with the general government about looking at potentially splitting the cost of a demographer. Because we also feel like if we were able to get a demographer and then geocode all of our kids and be able to see trends and movement, that that would be very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Riedinger. I'll just add one piece of info just as a response to your last question. It's six to nine months out of date, so it's, you take it with that grain of salt. But the last conversation I had with city staff was that permits for houses to be torn down and rebuilt were going at about 20 to 25 a year. And at the pace that they had, they thought, sorry, 50 a year. And at the pace, they thought it was something like 20 years remaining. The other piece of information that I got from that conversation is that actually, if you look over the past five years at where the student, the growth in the student population is, the bulk of the growth in the student population in the last five years has been that single-family home renovation and a larger family moves into what was a previously smaller student population. So that is a big driver. I think you're hitting something important to touch on.
And I did add that we will be providing the board with that updated count of all the students by the different dwelling types. So that is another piece that's in process that we'll be providing to you soon as well.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Others, other questions? Ms. Downs, I thought I saw your hand up, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, Chair Anderson. Thank you, Ms. Michael. One question isn't so much about the enrollment projection, but I had a question. Under Student Services, do we provide services to homeschooled students? They're listed under Student Service. I just didn't know if that's just how we categorize those students or? Okay, okay. That's, I just thought that was more, but okay. Thank you, just for clarification. And Dr. Noonan, I thought that was a really interesting point because the point that you made about our students who have financial need, because at our last ESOL advisory meeting, which I was actually going to bring up, we talked about how the ESOL students are often also the students who have financial difficulties. But we've seen that ESOL population drop, but not that economically distant. So I didn't even catch it. I thought that was very interesting and definitely in need of a data dive, I think, a data dig. And I guess, Ms. Michael, one other question. I know that traditionally, these projections never account for, you know, oncoming commercial development. And that's just, is that how? That's always the case that we don't, is it just because it's too far out or that's just too many unknowns or?
It's because the methodology that Weldon Cooper uses is really purely data-driven in terms of looking at births and that grade progression ratio. And they don't have enough expertise
Right.
in terms of really analyzing all of the different dwelling types, when they're coming online.
Right.
We did, as part of the process this year, share all of that with them
Right, right.
in terms of all of that development, really hoping that as we continue to work with them and work with the general government, that we can try to get even more refined projection data.
Okay. Thank you. But I think Chair Anderson is correct about the a lot, it seems like the enrollment's being driven by these single-family homes more so than the new developments. So I was just curious. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Other questions from anyone? Ms. Litten?
So this is kind of a big picture question, and I know you guys really have no idea. But just as we start to think about assumptions going all the way into next year, I mean, like, you know, there seems to be some good news about a vaccine. But are we making the assumption that we're not still in this at the beginning of next year? Or is it just kind of a wait-and-see thing? I mean, I know we all want to assume that, but
I think
I don't think it's a guarantee.
Yeah, it's a hard question to really answer and to wrestle to the ground. But I do think, you know, what we're hearing is sort of what the broader community is hearing too. And that is that the Pfizer trial has gone well and that they're looking at getting emergency youth authorization for the Pfizer. It's a two-shot vaccination. They'll be very, and in conversations with the Fairfax County Health Department, they've been working on their vaccination plan. There'll be very limited vaccines to begin with. But from what I understand from the from the Virginia Health Department and also the CDC, it looks like there would be a much better opportunity for the broader community to get vaccinated in the April-May timeframe. And if that indeed is the case, I think we're starting to plan as though we're going to be back next year and be past some of this. That being said, I think just like in any, whether it's an economic recovery or a student recovery or an educational recovery, it's not a V shape, you know. It may be a V on one side, but it's a gradual curve coming back. And so I think that's sort of driven our decision-making with respect to which of the methodologies to look at. But that may not come to pass. We may actually be in more of a V shape here because we've got the new high school coming online, which is going to be very exciting for a lot of people. And there may be some just other things that are happening in the city that might bring our kids back. So we think it's a cautiously, we're moving about this sort of cautiously, optimistically, thinking that we're going to be back to some semblance of normal this time next year. But if we're not, we can do online and we can do hybrid and we can do face-to-face. Yeah.
Any other questions from anyone on this? Mr. Webb, I'm looking at your screen just to make sure too, so. Okay, Ms. Downs, and then I have one I'll ask.
I missed it. So has there been a decision which of those three are you're still working on or we're not ready to reveal or?
I think we're pretty solid on number two.
Okay.
I think we're going to run up the middle.
Okay. I mean, I think that was what I was thinking as well.
Unless you all think otherwise.
No, I think, as long as we don't do three. I would, that would be, I think, too risky.
So I did have a couple of questions myself. So one is just more to get confirmation. Looking at the projections, even under the largest numbers, we don't have any capacity problems at Mount Daniel under these projections quite clearly. What about TJ? Sort of longer term, I'm looking outbound a bit. And then, of course, the high school and Henderson, different thing, but I'm thinking about TJ.
Yeah, we're fine with TJ for the foreseeable future. And part of that is that when the second grade moved over, it freed up a lot of space inside the building. We've moved fifth grade into the building from the MOD. The next question that we really need to wrestle with is what are we going to do with the MOD? If we keep the MOD, we're good for a long time. But once the library moves out, we'll have to figure out how we want to utilize that or not. And if we don't use it, there's still space for growth.
Okay. And then building on that, the next question in my mind is with the projections being lower for the new high school, we have presumably some extra flexibility in how we could use the building and how we could do teaching and other uses of that building. So what sort of planning do you envision being needed for something like that?
That's a great question and it's a fair question. I would say at this point, we haven't really been thinking about what that might look like long-term. To a great extent, I think there've been some sort of tangential conversations about what would it look like if we needed to move another grade level in there, for example, and then build on the capacity here at Henderson to look at moving a grade level here to free up some space. I think there's those possibilities on the horizon, but not knowing exactly what the long-term impact of the high school population is going to be. Because we saw such a dip at ninth grade and traditionally we see such a spike at ninth grade, it's really hard to know. But you are right in terms of there is some flexibility there to do some things differently. When we do open, we expect that we're going to be at about 70% usage capacity. And what's interesting about it is that there are 70 teaching spaces in that building. And they're all programmed for, with the exception of maybe one or two. So they are going to be used. It's just a matter of to what extent throughout the day are they used. So then it becomes a shared space and the like.
Okay, thanks. That's really sort of the questions that I've got. I'm curious what happened to their methodology in 2019 because that's where the slope break in that graph really kicks in, that you see the different projections get a lot flatter right then. But we can deal with that later. That's a separate point. I'm looking for any last question. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and move forward at this point. All right. So then takes us to our, unless I'm mistaken, am I thinking right? The final action item on our agenda tonight, 7.06 and first reading of policies.
That's right. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Minson.
Good evening. We have five policies for first reading tonight and a recommendation to remove one policy. But I would recommend that the board hear about that tonight and then remove that at the meeting during second reading next month, if that is what the board is amenable to. The first policy tonight would be Policy IA. This would replace our current policy 6.1. Policy 6.1 is kind of a one-page generic. The Falls Church City School Division is committed to excellence in public education and then goes through what some of that looks like in the form of excellence in public education. And I'm grateful to Mr. Bates and his staff, including Ginny Seabridge and Julie McCrina, for going through these instructional goals and objectives in the model policy from the VSBA to make sure that there weren't any questions, issues, and concerns. I did talk to the MTSS staff and got feedback. And everyone thinks that this model policy makes sense, is consistent with what we're doing now. One of the main reasons this policy is coming up now is there was a superintendent's memo that addresses the last paragraph of the policy on page three, starting at line 105, requiring timely written notification to parents when students don't meet the benchmark on any assessment that's used to determine at-risk learners in preschool through 12th grade. So when we got that superintendent's memo, we looked at it and said, we don't have that reflected in our policies and we should. So that made us put our eyes towards this policy. Any questions about Policy IA or what's being removed from Policy 6.1?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I just had a quick question, just sort of curious. On the second page, line 47, where we talk about, where it says adult education programs, is that something we do offer? Or does it just need to be in there saying we could?
So currently, we don't offer a traditional adult education program. But our students with special needs and our ESOL students are eligible for services until the age of 22. So we want to cover that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on this? I'm seeing any. Go ahead. Thanks.
All right, moving on to the next set of policies. Our current policy 4.5 talks about insurance and risk management and the way that the VSBA model policies are structured. That structure, that would be replaced by, I'm going to say, two and a half policies. The first two, Policy EI Insurance Management and Policy first two, policy EI, insurance management, and policy BHE, school board member liability insurance. So policy EI states that the school board maintains insurance on property, on vehicles. Liability insurance, which is what we have, it has an option of self-insurance, which we do not use, but that is allowed in the Virginia code for certain officers and employees. And includes that insurance, including workers' compensation and property insurance, is with insurance companies' authority to business in Virginia. This is consistent with our current practices. So thank you, Ms. Michael, for helping me work through that. The second policy that would be replacing policy 4.5 is policy BHE, that says Falls Church City School Board provides liability insurance for its members who are performing functions or services for the school division to cover their cost expenses incident to liability, including for settlement, suit satisfaction, judgment arising from conduct, and discharging their duties of performing functions or services for the school division. So that is quite similar to the language that is in 4.5. I think there would be nothing changed in our current practices or policies, but this is a good policy to move towards the model policies. Any questions about policy EI or BHE?
Not seeing any at this point.
Okay. I mentioned that policy 4.5 is replaced by two and a half policies. That other half policy is the next one. It's policy BHB, school board member compensation and benefits. This policy corresponds with bylaw 2.10, which actually is, word for word, the second paragraph of BHE, the actual expenses incident to performance of official duties, follows 2.10. But the final paragraph of bylaw 2.10 is reflected in BHE. I said BHE. Right. So 2.10 would be replaced by BHD, and then a part of 2.10 is replaced by BHE. Have I sufficiently confused everyone? The short version is, it makes sense to take these policies together, because there's portions of our current bylaw that are reflected in BHE, and the rest of our current bylaw is reflected in BHD. Questions about just policy BHD?
Any questions from anyone on this?
All right.
All right. Not seeing any.
Then the last policy to talk through tonight is policy EBCBA, electronic room partitions. This policy is based on relatively new Virginia law that came out of the horrible and tragic incident in Fairfax County where a student was injured and ultimately died from an electronic room partition, not having proper sensors on it, and the student was, was crushed. So, uh, Virginia code passed right away that said there needs to be certain training in place, and either no students in the building, no students in the room, or a safety sensor that automatically stops the wall if a body is sensed passing through the partition. We do have two partitions here at Mary Ellen Henderson. I have been, as part of my legal training for the past two years, including this, for instruction for staff. Stevie and Kristen have been working to make sure that anyone who has the keys, who knows how that's used, know the rules and expectations. So this policy is both consistent with what we have been doing, but is important to have in place so that we can make sure, as we're training folks, that they know this is our expectation, this is required by the law. So this is a brand-new policy. It would not be replacing a current policy, but it is consistent with our practices. Any questions about policy EBCBA? Looks like there are a few.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. And thank you, Ms. Minson. Just a quick, so the only partitions that we have are at MEH?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Ms. Litten?
I was just trying to understand, is it saying, like, no student is present in the building or these other things?
Yeah. So it's saying, no student is present in the building, or there's no student present in the room, and the outdoor doors to the room are locked, so no student can get in, or there's the safety sensor so that it automatically stops when a body is present.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on this policy? All right. Not seeing any. There's one that you're talking about for removal.
Right. And so the last policy for this evening is not the adoption of a new policy, but once I was looking at some of the policies in Section 4, I realized that the conflicts of interest policy that is currently at policy 4.2 is covered by BBFA, a policy that the board had adopted, I think, twice, once and then edited, most recently in October of 2019. So all the provisions that are included in this are covered in that policy. There's also a section of this that references bylaw 2.9, saying that conflicts of interest provisions are contained in bylaw 2.9, which has already been replaced by policy GCCB, employment of family members. So since both the internal policies that are referenced in this policy and this policy itself are included in policies the board has adopted, and actually GCCB was also adopted in October 2019, I would recommend that the board remove this policy. But rather than doing it today with first reading, I thought it made sense that if there are questions or after looking at this at the board during second reading of the other policies, remove this policy next month. Any questions about that proposal to remove policy 4.2?
Any questions from anyone on that? Not seeing any. I'll just take one last chance to ask. Any questions on any of the policies that are potentially for first reading? And otherwise, I'll seek a motion. All right. Mr. Reining?
Just a somewhat orthogonal question. First off, I did want to thank Ms. Minson for helping us along this long journey to replace all of our policies. It's been many years so far, and I'm sure it gets tedious, but it will well be the better for it. I did have a question, though, which is, how far along are we?
Um, I think it depends on a number of factors. Right now, I think we've gotten to about 100 policies. One of the, there's a couple challenges. One is some of the bigger policies that are going to take some time and probably some groups of folks to come together to give some input. So we'll take longer time. Those are some of the ones we haven't been able to dive into yet, but we have plans to go forward on those. The other challenge is, the policies are always changing as the law is changing. So once we get fully into the VSBA model policies, when we get those revisions from the VSBA, it will be fairly easy to say, these 10 policies have proposed changes, let's work through those. But right now, since we're looking at new policies and we're looking at the ones that are changed, I need to be bringing back policies that have more recently been revised. So it's not, not a one-for-one. We've already adopted this, move on. It's have there been any changes that we need to come back to? So I guess the short answer to the question is, we are making fairly good headway. This has been one of my, my goals while I've, every year, working with Dr. Noonan, of how many policies should we bring, what's a reasonable amount, how can we break it down into bite-sized versions, while also making sure we get the right teams together to look at some of these bigger policies. And we're, we're moving in the right direction, but I do wish that it was going faster. And there are definitely times where I have a slew of policies, and I hold back on them because I don't want to overwhelm you, or we have a lot going on. But sometimes it's a struggle to even get two or three before you. And we'll just keep chugging along and appreciate your support and diligence in reviewing the policies and bringing questions and helping us get there, because it's a, it's a group effort for sure.
So the answer is we have a ways to go.
It's incremental, Mr. Reining.
We have fewer miles to go before we sleep, but we still have miles to go.
Miles, miles.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions on this? Otherwise, I'll seek a motion. All right. I would entertain a motion regarding the, these policies. Mr. Webb?
I move that the school board approve first reading of policies IA, instructional goals and objectives, EI, insurance management, BHE, school board member liability, BHD, school board member compensation, and EBCBA, electronic partitions.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Ms. Giddo.
Yes. Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yeah.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Mr. Lightinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. So that concludes our business and action items tonight, and we now can move into future agenda topics and then our superintendent's report and our comments. So for future agenda topics, just wanted to highlight four upcoming meetings that we have before us here in the next, roughly speaking, five, six weeks. So on the 17th, our work session, we, right now, I'm, we're planning for two agenda items for that. There is, that is the date that we expect to have the presentation from K12 Insight on the, the survey related to the school renaming consideration. And so we'll have them come. It'll also be an opportunity for us to have a dialogue about what we've, what we've received, if there is any other information that members need in order to be able to, to reach a decision, and then there's that. So there's that, and then the calendar, school calendar, to receive information updates, touching from the state process that's ongoing for that, and, and get further feedback into, into development of that. Correct on that one?
Sorry, Mr. Anderson.
School calendar, school calendar on the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Sorry about that. So that, that's really what's right now on the agenda, but 17th. On, on the 7th of December, we have our joint meeting with city council to talk about budget guidance for the upcoming year. That's Monday, the 7th of December. I believe that's at 7:30, because that's normally when they have their meetings, but I'll check, and we can get back on that. 8th of December is our next regular meeting, and then the 15th of December is our next work session. And it's my intention at this point to say that what we'd really like to do on the 15th of December is to continue our work on the policy related to diversity, equity, inclusion, anti-racism, and continue on, on our work on that. But, so that's the, the thought currently about the four meetings that are coming up. But if there are additional items or modifications folks would like to make, I'd like to hear them so that we can do our planning. Dr. Dimick?
I want to raise the issue of the online schedule at the middle school and high school and instructional time. I would like to know if we are effectively using the limited amount of time we have online with our students. I think it's great that we're moving into a hybrid, and I hope this continues. But if that doesn't continue, and in the new year, we remain in an online environment with our middle school and our high school, I would, I would like us to know that we're doing the best job that we can be doing at, at providing a, a great education for our students. Right now, middle schoolers spend the same amount of time in study hall that they spend in their core subjects each week. Each week, they spend the same amount of time in their advisory groups that they spend in their core subjects. And it could be that this is working really well, but I think now that we've had a quarter of instruction, I guess I would like to know more. We did a great job in spring of pivoting to online education. We did an even better job this fall of providing a really robust, synchronous schedule for the students and a really, I think, a solid program. But I think, now that we've been through a quarter, I guess I would, I would like to know how it's going and, and if we can do better, if we end up in an online environment for a longer period of time than we had hoped.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. So are there any other, any thoughts related to, to that topic right now? I'm thinking of a possible way of, of scheduling something like that as, as we sit, but I want to see if anybody has feedback on that.
I just wanted to let the board know that, Ms. Dimick, thank you, has been in contact with me, and we're preparing a response to just that question. And we were going to get that to you later this week, and I'd be happy to include that in the Friday update as well, so that perhaps is one way we could get some information out. But if you all want to have a work session about it, you know, we could invite Valerie Hardy and, and her team. In December, we would like to bring one other item, and we've got a placeholder in there. I'd like to talk to the chair about it before we announce it.
Vice Chair Russell?
Thanks, Chair Anderson. I guess, given the schedule and everything that I have going on, and, I mean, let's be honest, the relative uncertainty of the next couple months, I think, you know, having further discussion about the online schedule, I'd personally prefer to push it into January, when we actually know if that's where we're going to be at, as opposed to spending a lot of time, energy, in December, talking about it, when it might not even be an issue. I just think we have a lot on our agenda, and a lot of things that we want to try and get through.
Thank you, Vice Chair Russell. So Dr. Noonan talked about a, basically a Friday update document to start with, potentially, on what's being done. My concern is, my concern in this is a balance between, this is an important question, to make sure that we're doing the best that we can, given the, the situation that we're in, but I also am sensitive to the fact that we're also in the process of, of reopening the elementary schools, planning for the, for the hybrid reopening at the secondary. So it's sort of a, I'm trying to make sure that we're not asking so much of stuff, that it's, it's making the...
Yeah. I appreciate that. I think we can put together a document that would at least sort of baseline everybody, so that, sort of have a broader understanding of, of what the time is, how it's being used, what the purpose of, you know, each of the periods of time are. And then, from there, that could inform a, a further discussion at that point. But I, I don't think that it would be, I mean, we've been working on it already, so we'd be happy to, to send that out to everybody.
So, given that, and given sort of the balance of what I, what I'm hearing, I'm wondering about this as a plan, which is, why don't we get that document and then see if there are immediate questions that we have that folks would like to ask, that might be the sorts of questions that need, you know, need some more writing to be able to answer. For right now, put that, put that as an item that could come up in December if conditions warranted, but could also come up in January, if that seems like a more appropriate time. I, I don't think it would be something that I'd want to be putting onto the agenda for the 17th, given the, the other things that are already on the agenda for the 17th. And potentially, we could, we could see where we are on the 8th of December, and whether it makes sense to have some kind of an update as a part of the agenda on that. Dr. Dimick, I don't know if that seems okay, and others, what, what others think at this point?
I think that would work. I, I know that we're very busy. I just, I guess I'm concerned that we think about it in enough in advance, that if, if adjustments need to be made to an online schedule that's been in place for two quarters, we're able to make those adjustments for the second semester. Because I act, I am hearing from people who say, my kid has a two-hour lunch each day. And I know that an hour of that is not meant to be lunch, it's meant to be instructional time, but to a middle schooler, that's a two-hour-long break. And, yeah, I've just been hearing from folks, and I, I think it's something to pay attention to.
Okay. Well, for now, I think then, I appreciate the, appreciate the concern, and certainly, we've, we've received, there's nothing else, an email about that as a, a comment earlier this week. So, um, why don't we just, why don't we go ahead for right now with, we will get it, be expecting a document to baseline and, and give us some additional information that may allow us to have some questions to develop. And then, when we come to the planning for the meeting in the beginning of December, we can look to see where we are. If it seems like an appropriate topic, we can do, we can bring it to the, to the agenda then, and if not, then we can bring it to the agenda in January, just as a response to conditions and as things fall. So, is that okay with, with folks? I'm sort of seeing nods and general acceptance. So, okay. So with that, then, are there other agenda topics, future agenda topics, that anyone would like to raise for further on down the road? Mr. Reining?
So this is a far, far, far down the road. I'm thinking like, you know, March, April, May, or even after that. You know, we are, I, I'm not... You know, we are, I, I'm not by any means trying to declare victory over the pandemic yet, but we've got a less, a lot of lessons learned already, and, you know, the future of education is going to change in a lot of different ways. You know, the, the mundane example is, are we done with snow days, right? But it goes to, you know, I'm sure Dr. Noonan and staff are far more expert in this than I am, but, you know, there's lots of opportunities, including, you know, are we going to, instead of sending kids to TJ in the future, send them remotely in a couple of classes that they need to go? Or, you know, are we going to bring in students from other places because we've got an IB program? There's a whole bunch of things that I think we're going to need to think through at some point, and we'll have guidance from the State Board of Education, of course. But before we get too far in the distance, it would be useful, I think, to have sort of a signposting discussion that would help us capture some lessons learned and thoughts about the future, and at least places we want to look at whether there should be policy changes to better make the school agile and able to deal with these sorts of situations. So I, it's not a thing, like I said, that we're going to do in February, but I just want to sort of lay it out there as a topic that we ought to put on the agenda to discuss when we actually have mindshare to devote to that problem.
Dr. Noonan?
Thank you for, for raising that, Mr. Redinger, and it is something that has certainly been on our mind a lot, and we would really enjoy a broader conversation with all of you about that. I'll share with you just one more quick anecdote from today. This is the first kindergarten arrival at any elementary school I've ever been to where there was not one student that cried. And the reason for that was that there was no separation issues because the students knew their teachers already from the online experience. So one of the things we, we've already begun to talk about is, are there ways that we can incorporate some of the online work prior to kindergarten students coming so they build a relationship with their teachers? And talking about that, and obviously, the snow day and the like. But we, we've begun to think about that, and we're really excited about some of the possibilities.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, and thank you, Mr. Redinger, for that. That sounds like a sort of a long-term item that we want to have on the list, but not, not set on a specific date at this point, but got that. Other future agenda items anyone wants to bring forward for planning? All right, not seeing any. We'll go ahead with, with where we have right now on the schedule. And again, I have, Dr. Dimick, I do have that item, and we'll work on a scheduling for it. And I guess this to confirm that the 15th of December, the December work session, coming forward with that policy work, I think would be, would be a good focus, so, okay. All right, well, then that takes us to item nine, and Dr. Noonan, your report.
Thank you. Thanks again, everybody, for a great meeting tonight. Just a couple of quick updates. As, as I mentioned earlier in the metrics conversation, we are in the City of Falls Church doing a really good job of maintaining really low levels of infection and transmission. In fact, we're seeing, seeing on our calls, one, maybe two cases per week, and sometimes less, which is really, really a good thing. So I just want to remind the, the community to kind of keep that up, you know, and, and remind your, your kiddos at home, particularly those that are middle school and high school age, to, you know, wear your masks and maintain your social distancing, and don't do your handshakes and everything else. Because if we can really kind of come back into some sense of normalcy, it will be really great for, for everyone. I want to just brief everybody quickly about nominations for awards. There, it is open right now for the Falls Church Education Foundation Teacher of the Year, Support Staff Employee of the Year, and Professional Staff Specialist of the Year. There are so many people in our division who are eligible for these events. So if, if there's a parent out there or a student out there that, that you have somebody that you think is making a complete difference in the life of your kid, and there's, again, I think it's just about everybody right now, don't hesitate to make that nomination. The packets can be found on our, our website, and the nominees need to go to Amy Hall in our Human Resources Department by, by December 4th to confirm eligibility. And then the packet completion wouldn't be done until January 7th. So we, we would love to get as many folks out there nominating some of our, some of our things. At Jesse Thackeray, we are really excited. Things continue to sort of roll along. Marie Rudy and her team down there are doing a really great job and have built in some really great routines, and everybody, and it's a, it's a perfect example of how things go when they go well. They've been in now for a month, and everyone's comfortable, and everybody's doing their work, and we've had zero in, in infection. We've had zero issues at, at the school, and that is the highest-density school that we have in all of our division. Mount Daniel and Chavest Jefferson, of course, having one day in the books. We're thankful for everybody who was able to make that, make that happen. Just a quick shout out to George Mason for some creativity and virtual life to Ms. Mahoney. She connected with one of her former teachers, Ms. Eisenberg, who now teaches in Oregon. Their history class has used an app to have a post-election conversation about the race and their community impacts from COVID. So it's a really nice opportunity to see what's the difference between east and west. And we are scheduling one last visit for George Mason High School, the old George Mason High School. So there are going to be two days where the public is going to be able to come into George Mason. And the first is Saturday, November 28th, and we are going to do some publicity around this, so you'll, you'll know. And the second is Sunday, December 27th. So we've got one this month and one next month. That will be from 9:00 to 3:00. Face coverings and social distancing is going to be required, and we are going to limit people inside the building to 50, and, and limit your time to 30 minutes so that we can get as many people through. So if there's a queue when you come, there'll just be a queue when you come, and you may have to wait a little bit until some people come out, but we do want to limit to 50. And it'll be an opportunity for people to come in and take one last picture before, before we close it down. And then, the community, I just want to give a shout out to the Falls Church Ed Foundation, who are starting, who are starting their annual auction. No gala this year as a consequence of COVID, and that starts on Friday, November 13th. And it's the roaring twenties is the theme of their online auction. And Wednesday, November 18th, is the last day to purchase a party box, they call them, for, for yourself or for one of your students' teachers. And then the auction itself actually closes on the 20th. And you'll be able to find all that information on the foundation's website. So that is it, Chair Anderson, and we are looking forward to another great week next week. But a good, a good rest of the week this week and a really great week next week.
Thank you very much, Dr. Noonan. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Noonan on his report? Mrs. Litten?
Just a quick question, kind of related to getting to go see the old Mason. I've started to get questions from people in the community. Is there ever going to be a chance to come tour the new school once it's open?
Yes, so thank you for asking that question. We are in the process of planning a ribbon cutting. We had scheduled originally the weekend of January 23rd, 24th to be the ribbon cutting. And right now, it looks like it's going to be a hybrid ribbon cutting. However, we, we can't do any tours of anybody from the public until after we get substantial completion and a certificate of occupancy, which will be at the end of December. And we wouldn't want to tour anybody before the ribbon cutting ceremony. So we are hopeful that in January, we'll be able to do small group tours, and we'll start putting those together. We have some student ambassadors who are being trained, not only in the new building, but also in the environmental sustainability aspects of the building. They can show people where the, the well comes, all the geothermal wells come in. They can show them the green roofs. They can talk about those PV arrays and solar and the like. And those students will be our ambassadors who are going to do those tours. So they're coming. They're just a little bit more complicated to schedule in a pandemic than normal. So we're looking at January, though.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Any other questions for Dr. Noonan on his report? All right, not seeing any at this point, then. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. And we'll move on to Board and Student Liaison comments. And just for simplicity's sake, I'm going to just call on everybody alphabetical by last name, and I will start with Dr. Dimick.
The special ed committee is working on bylaws, and the middle school PTA had a very successful fundraiser in partnership with the state theater, was sold out quickly, and they are looking at other possibilities that are virtual or hybrid in our new world, so.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I have a couple updates. One is for Mason PTA, PTSA held an outdoor movie night in conjunction with the SCA, which is very successful, and they're hoping it's a model for other events such as that. And they're continuing to support club meetings outside, so thank you to that group for, for their help. I attended the Parks and Rec Board, and there was some public comment regarding the fellows' property across from TJ Elementary and what community members would like seeing done with that space. And one of the comments that came up was using it possibly as an outdoor classroom for TJ. So I thought that was interesting and something we might want to keep in mind. And we also talked about, there's a presentation about the West Broad Development, and the number that the developers gave in terms of potential enrollment would be, that that development could contribute to our enrollment, would be 40 to 60 additional students. And so that's just something, you know, obviously, that's years down the road. And in terms of our ESOL committee meeting, we talked a lot about bridging the gaps with our ESOL students by translating documents and getting more ESOL students involved in sports and extracurriculars. Dr. Santiago's been busily screening students for ESOL services. And then finally, I have to, Dr. Noonan, put in a plug for, when we have, we're out of the pandemic and our budget's looking better, we would love another full-time ESOL teacher at Mason. So, thank you. I just had to do that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Ms. Litten?
Great, thank you, Chair Anderson. Just a couple quick things. The elementary PTA, as you guys know, is doing some great work. Dr. Noonan mentioned they organize the sidewalk decorating, which was a really fun thing, I think, for kids who showed up today. They've held some trivia nights for elementary school kids, and they still have one coming up that's a parent trivia night, that's a fundraiser, and you can join as a team. So get your team together for some trivia. And they also are putting together some COVID-friendly snacks for some of our teachers for next week. Just a shout out also to Mary Beth Conley for the work she did last month organizing the BI E Community Partnerships Week. And finally, the Coral Boosters are selling some mutesetas, so check out their website if anybody has any interest in that. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Mr. Redinger?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I was able to attend the daycare advisory board meeting last night. And just a brief report, it was, it was, it was enjoyable, sort of super exciting to see how excited all of the, both parents and teachers, daycare people were to have their program kickoff again today with school. So it was a, it, it's a, it's a super well-run program. Attendance is going to be down a little this year, but it is, it's, it's, it's just as exciting as the, as the school opening, and the, the teachers are just as excited to have the kids there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Redinger. Vice Chair Russell?
Thanks, Chair Anderson. So I was able to attend the Athletic Boosters meeting. I guess it's Monday night, it was last night. And their big news is that the VHSL has agreed that they're moving forward with the sports schedule as they had originally promoted it. So the winter sports, yeah, winter sports will start, and I think triads are December 7th. Okay, and so, and then they'll be kicking off competition by the end of December. So they're super excited about that. Director, I thought Director Wooten was on the call, and he provided a lot of great information. But the reality is, there's a lot of logistics that are going to need to be worked out, so I think that that's what their focus is probably going to be for the next month or so, is trying to figure out things like concessions. Obviously, they probably can't sell them or what it's going to look like. Attendance will be limited, if not nonexistent, but then also other things like transportation, so on and so forth. So they just have a lot of logistics that they're going to be working on and trying to figure out how this is all going to fit together. But they're extremely excited to have sports back and being able to move forward with that. So that's great news.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Russell. Ms. Snyder? Thank you, Ms. Snyder. And I'll just try to make sure that Mr. Webb was able to hear you, and if not, I'll just quickly say it again. But Mr. Webb, did you pick up what Ms. Snyder was saying?
The only part of what I heard her say was her laptop had died.
All right, well, let me, let me try to summarize, since I think I'm closer to a mic. There've been a variety of groups meeting for club activities at the high school, both, both clubs and, and small team group things going on outside, socially distanced, this sort of thing. And the SCA leadership is working on some ways of making the return to school particularly special as, for seniors and, and the other students, and trying to get folks connected and feeling tied with the new building. And Ms. Snyder brought up that the Mustang medallion, which never step on the Mustang medallion, of course, has now been moved over to the new building, so that's good. And that the student leadership is working on, continuing on their work on equity, which fits very nicely and with our work on equity at our December work session, so.
Chair Anderson, I also would add, you know that there's something going on when there's a bobcat in the hallway of George Mason. They're actually, it required a bobcat in the hallway to get the medallion out.
Sorry, that just puts together a whole bunch of images that I should just stop now and, and move on. Okay, Ms. Snyder, was that a fair restatement? Okay, thank you very much, then. And Mr. Webb, I'm looking, on to you.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. No real report tonight. Dr. Noonan kind of made the comment about the Ed Foundation and the online auction. I was unable to attend last night's meeting as I am out of town this, this week. With, my mom actually is here with me a couple nights this week as well, so it's good to see her. But I was just, asked my colleagues on the board as Debbie Hisska asked me to, if you all could, within your social media world, just plug the Ed Foundation's online auction just to make sure that it's, it gets as much publicity as it can because they do great things for our, our staff and students. And we want to make sure that this, that the online auction is as successful as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. So that leaves me for my report. And then I believe Dr. Noonan has a additional item that we're going to talk about. But so my report, main thing I want to mention is, I wasn't able to attend the Chamber Board meeting this morning because I was at Mount Daniel. But I would like to highlight two items from their, from their meeting today. One is to let everybody know that the Chamber Online Virtual Gala will be on December 3rd and some details to follow about how to participate. But the local business community is definitely a big ally of our schools. And so I want to make sure to highlight that as a, as an item for the, for the Chamber. And then also as a reminder that November for the third year running is live local month in Falls Church. For reasons that really don't need to be said, we have extra reason to live local this year. But I will also point out that it does have a real benefit. One very bright spot in the budget picture has been the local sales tax revenue has been really up there above projections, partially because of everyone living local. So we'll plug for that. More generally, the other thing I wanted to make sure for folks to know, as I said earlier, when the discussion of future agenda items, on the 17th, we'll be receiving the report from K-12 Insight with the results of the survey that they administered for us. The original schedule had us seeing a draft of that tonight. That was an early miscommunication and we will have a draft tomorrow that we expect to be able to have. And then the final version will be posted for the board to review prior to the meeting. So that should be out on the 13th. But just wanted to make sure folks understood that was a miscommunication for it. And the other thing I was going to say is, again, just a backup, what Ms. Litten said, the chalk around the schools. And then thank you to the PTAs for brightening the, the entry for our students today. It was, that was a lot of fun, it looked like to me. And so they did a nice job. So thank you for that. And, Dr. Noonan, I think you had an additional take back.
I apologize for the, the go back. I, I think I'm just in denial. But I wanted to let all of you know, if you hadn't heard, that Marie Baroudi has decided that she's going to retire. She has been in education for 31 years and has done an extraordinary job and came over to the City of Falls Church after a long career in Fairfax County and has done amazing work at JTP. So we are very excited for Marie to take her next step in her life and her journey with her husband, Mark. But her last day will be the middle of December. And we are currently and actively seeking a replacement for her. And in the meantime, we do have, we're working on a plan. We don't have a plan quite baked yet, but we are working on a plan to have someone as an interim there. But we're very sad to see her go.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Richard Rudy's been a real, real leader for the school there. And so, yeah, it's, it's kind of a, kind of a mixed, mixed feeling on this one, right? Always want to give somebody good wishes on their next, on their next journey. So I don't know if anybody has any other comments, questions? Otherwise, we do just have one last thing to do. All right. Not seeing any then. We'll move on to our item 11, which is, we have three sets of minutes to approve. And one is to, is actually the date, not so much the minutes themselves. But I don't know if anybody has any comments or corrections on the minutes. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for, for amending the date. And then there are also two sets to approve. All right. Ms. Litten?
Mr. Chair, I moved, that the school board moved to amend the October 13th Agenda and Business Item 11.01 to reflect the correct date of the December 2nd, 2019 minutes. Is that correct? Do we have to do them all separately?
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Downs. Ms. Goodell?
Yes, Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yeah.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I would seek a motion related to two sets of minutes. Ms. Down?
Chair Anderson, I moved that the school board approved the minutes of January 14th, 2020, and October 6th, 2020 as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Ms. Goodell?
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Dimick?
Yeah.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Litten?
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. There are some materials for the board to review, some of which was, some of the information in there is contained in the report that, that we already have from Ms. Michael. So thank you very much. And I will just look around the room quickly to see if there are any final thoughts anyone has. And not seeing any, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.